It is April 13th. I want to welcome each and every one of you to the Rules, Elections, Intergovernmental Relations and Neighborhoods Committee. We have one item on today's agenda, but before we get started, I want to just give a big thank you to each and every one of you for coming out this evening. I want to explain to you that this is an agendized committee hearing. So that's why you see we have the city staff that are with us today. And we're doing this in partnership with the mayor's office, and we have deputy mayor with us today. We worked hard with our city comptroller, Ron Galperin, and we partnered directly with the neighborhood councils. And I want to give a shout out to Terry Gomes and Lank and all of the neighborhood councils that fall under that umbrella. This is a, there was a commitment made early on that we were going to do our best to have the public involved, and we figure that this is the way, the approach that we want to take. So before we begin, I do want to remind the members from the neighborhood councils to weigh in on this if you'd like at your neighborhood councils. Send us what you think about DWP reform. It can be just something as simple as you support the concept of reform. It could be something more detailed. I think this is a great opportunity for the council and the neighborhood councils to partner, and I would not want us to miss out on this opportunity. Another thing that I want to say is, I guess it was last week, Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Gomes, Mr. Wilkinson, we, a report was sent out by the CAO's office and the CLA's office. Normally what occurs, we would have a conversation about that within the council, and then we would invite the public to be part of it. We decided to do that differently. This is the very first conversation about that subject at this hearing, and you are a part of it. So again, I just want to stay good on the commitment that the mayor made, that Galperin made, that I made, that we were going to do this and afford you the opportunity to appreciate. I really think it's important that I acknowledge my friend and colleague Felipe Fuentes, because he's kind of the fuel that got this going. It is the motion that he spent a significant amount of time working on, asking questions, doing research. It is his motion that is, in essence, the working document of this committee. And so I really appreciate you being here. He has been at every committee hearing on this subject, and tonight being absolutely no different. So, we're going to proceed, but I wanted to see if Mr. Harris Dawson wanted to say a word. He says he's good, but you know, let's do something that has, let's make history. I'm going to ask Terry, Terry Gomes, the chair of Lank, to go on the record as part of this committee that's going to be asking questions of the CAO and the CLA. Mr. Gomes, the floor is yours.
Wow. You took part of my thunder by saying "historical," because I was going to say you're creating something historical here, because this is actually really, other than when we first started, when Mayor Garcetti came into office, and we worked with him, LEDWP, Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Coalition, to actually come together when we were having the employee's contract come up. And we actually had the first meeting where we all came together in the public works room, and actually came together, hammered out some agreements that actually made sense and helped the people of the city of Los Angeles. And now, it's a continuation of being historical for the partnership where actually neighborhood councils and Angelinos are actually able to come together and work on a problem with the city of Los Angeles. Because when you look at the history of LEDWP, it actually started with, in, where, it didn't start out in the best circumstances, when you look at history. I mean, it started out where we had the Los Angeles City Water Company, where it was a private franchise, and the franchisees were actually stealing water from the city. A known fact, 150% of what they were doing-
I wasn't there, Terry.
Yeah, neither was I. That was back in the 1800s, but the fact is, it started like that, and it progressed. And now here we are today, full circle, where we're able to actually make it a great event with everybody being a partner, to actually work out what we have to do for LEDWP, not only for the present, but for the future. So thank you, Council President Wesson, for moving this forward.
Now, thank you. It is indeed my pleasure. Now, if any of you in the audience want to give a public comment, please fill out cards. I'm going to be calling names throughout the hearing, so there'll be no, we're not going to do it all at the end, we're not going to do it all at the beginning. As I get these cards, we will call names, then you'll come up to the center and state your, you know, make your statement. I'd now like to ask Ms. Romero, deputy mayor, if you'd like to say a couple of words, representing the mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President and council members. Thank you for inviting me to speak on behalf of Mayor Garcetti, and also thank you for you here attending. I know it must have been tempting to stay home and watch Kobe's last game, but I'm glad you guys are here to be part of this important discussion. Serving as deputy mayor of city services, I've been working closely with Mayor Garcetti on his Back to Basics agenda. DWP reform has been a priority for the mayor, working to make the utility more efficient and transparent for Angelinos, and we made real progress in the last few years. But obviously, we need to do more. The mayor has a couple of key principles on DWP reform, with the goals to rebuild public trust, get more bang for our buck, and to be prepared for the challenges ahead of us, including climate change and our state's ongoing drought. To achieve these goals, there are some core issues that we know this reform needs to address, including modifying contracting and procurement procedures that are costly and inefficient, creating more flexibility in the hiring process at DWP, establishing a predictable and transparent and research-based rate-making process, and strengthening, of course, the role of the ratepayer advocate, a position that Mayor Garcetti helped create five years ago. There are options for how we can get there. The analysis that will be presented today and the discussion that will take place tonight are critical parts of developing that roadmap. Tonight, I'm here to listen. The CLA and CAO report provide a menu of options. Our job in the next few months will be to focus on which options will better help us address these core issues. This is the public's utility, and we want to work with all Angelinos, and I just look forward to making that happen together. Thank you very much.
Now, thank you. And I want to recognize, I just looked up and saw my former boss just entered the room, Councilman Nate Holden. Welcome. Let's give the councilman a round of applause for all his service. And for being very hard on me, and you trained me well, chief. So anyway, welcome. So, we're going to have at a minimum three regional community hearings. This is the first one. The other two we will have in May. One will be in the southern portion of the city, the other will be in the valley, and we will have them, I believe they will be in the evening as well, or either on a Saturday. We want to try to afford you the opportunity to come and participate without missing work. With that said, I think the way Mr. Harris Dawson and all, the way we're going to start here, is I'm going to ask Mr. Fuentes to just come up, walk us through his proposal. Come on, Joanne, get a seat. Good to see you. And then from there, I'll bring up the CAO, CLA, and the Dr. Pickle. Mr. Fuentes, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Council President Wesson and my colleague, Marquise Harris Dawson, and obviously all of our guests tonight for participating in this conversation today. Let me begin, Council President Wesson, by first of all acknowledging what a tremendous document the CAO and the CLA have put together for us tonight. I think that if you look back and look at governance and how it is that the city of Los Angeles does things, it's not always necessarily the easiest way to sort of understand. But in this report that's going to be presented tonight, all 71 pages of it really encapsulate, I think, all of the important issues that are involved with the conversation that Los Angeles needs to have with its utility. And I think it's a very, very good analysis, it's very thoughtful, and every which scenario that could possibly be documented has been. And so, it's a long way to say that I think that we would be benefited greatly if we had that type of analysis at the department and its volunteer commission. I think that would go a long way to solving some of the problems that we have. As the creator of the motion on reform, I've carefully reviewed the report, listened to feedback from ratepayers and other stakeholders, and I very much look forward to proceedings like this one, so that we can hear even more from our very important ratepayers and Angelinos. So I wanted to lay out with you all tonight a little bit about some of the highlights that I think the report really touches on, and sort of where I think we should go. First of all, I think it's really important for us, and by, evidenced by the hearings that we're having, that the governance structure at the utility must be strengthened. And I think that there is a couple of ways of doing that. In my original motion, I initially proposed creating a full-time board of water and power commissioners. Now, I've had an opportunity to speak to a lot of stakeholders, I've heard a lot of comment, and a lot of concerns were raised about what that type of governance structure would mean in terms of costs and bureaucracy. So in response, I would support a part-time board of water and power commissioners if the following changes are implemented, because I think they safeguard what it is that I think the department actually needs, which is true independent, reason-based decision-making. And I think this is how you do it with a part-time board. First of all, I think that the size of the board should be increased to seven members to better reflect the diversity and the vast qualifications that directors could bring to the table in serving the country's largest municipal utility. Commissioners, I think, should also be selected through a shared appointment model between the mayor and the city council. Commissioners should also be required to have certain expertise-oriented qualifications to serve on the board, and I think if we went to seven, that gives us an opportunity to really encapsulate that type of expertise. Commissioners should also serve a staggered five-year term, and I think most importantly, the removal process for board of water and power commissioners should mirror what we already have in practice in our charter in the police commission. This would allow a commissioner who has been removed by a mayor to at least appeal that decision to the full city council, which would reinstate a commissioner with a two-thirds vote. I think that gives everybody the balance that we're looking towards, in independence and a mechanism by which contested removal could be addressed. Secondly, and I would say that we should limit board actions, only limited board actions should require city council concurrence. I think what we have found in effect is that so much comes to this council that really doesn't need to, from a process perspective. This new board of water and power commissioners should be a true decision-making body with real fiduciary responsibility to the ratepayer and the rate base. Under this system, the city council concurrence of many of the board items and actions should not be required as they currently are under the charter. So I think that area should be absolutely looked at. Now, the CAO/CLA report identified areas over which the city council may want to consider maintaining its discretion and authority over some very significant decisions. And I think that there are two areas that absolutely should require city council approval. And those two areas would be the surplus water sales, which is an absolute right to Angelinos, and the second is the power of condemnation and eminent domain. I think for those two categories, we should absolutely have elected officials ultimately ratify decisions. The board should also be given the authority to make all other decisions at the utility without requiring the consent of the city council. The city council, however, should maintain its jurisdiction over board actions if necessary, meaning I would support a 245 structure like we currently have in place. I am not a fan of doing a super 245 like we used to have in the old charter. I think the 245 ability should be plenty. Third, the board of water and power commissioners should have access to independent budget, policy, and legal analysis, just like we enjoy and is evidenced by a report like this. As outlined in the CAO/CLA report, I would support giving the board authority to hire analytical and legal staff who review DWP management recommendations. I would also support increasing the staff of the public, the Office of the Public Accountability, and exploring options for strengthening the role of the OPA. I request your committee, in fact, to instruct the CAO and the CLA to report on options for strengthening the Office of the Ratepayer Advocate, as outlined in the report, but I'd also include an ex-official-like role for the Advocate Ratepayer, Ratepayer Advocate. I think just strengthening the body should not be enough. I think there ought to be independent legal and policy analysis, and the Ratepayer Advocate should benefit from that information. I think that that would cure some of the inherent conflicts that a ratepayer advocate may have with being also responsible for the legal analysis and policy analysis. Fourth, the Department of Water and Power should have greater flexibility in hiring. I think that is by and large something that's been evidenced in so many reports, that we are not nearly agile enough to do what it is that the utility needs to do. As the report notes, any changes to civil service would require discussions with labor and take an awful lot of time, and rightfully so. These are our partners, and we should absolutely figure out how to negotiate with them on these points. I would support the proposed ballot language in the report, which would give the new governing body of the utility the flexibility to have those discussions and develop a new hiring system which works for the department. This is a needed first step in what will be a long process, a civil service reform at the utility, and we may even learn something from that conversation for the rest of the city of Los Angeles. Additionally, I would support amending the charter to place all human resources functions under the control of the DWP board in order for the utility to have greater flexibility to meet its operational needs. DWP reform must also address the power revenue transfer. As the report mentions, the amount of the revenue transfer is set by ordinance, it is not in our charter. The city council may be able to address the transfer without making a change to the charter. Such actions should be done in conjunction with these other reform efforts, so that we don't separate or parse out what it is that we're trying to accomplish here. So I would request that the committee instruct the CAO, CLA, and the city attorney to provide options for capping or limiting the transfer. Finally, the report details several other options for reform which do not require changes to the charter and which could be addressed by changes to the city administrative code. I would request that this committee consider changes to improve contracting at the utility along with the broader charter reform. In closing, Council President and my colleague, I would really very much like to say to you that I think that this is a very, very good process that we're endeavoring to proceed, and I think it really is historical. But separate and aside from how different it is from how we do things, it is absolutely critical that we take some action in making sure that ratepayers get the most bang for their buck. Just six years ago, this council had no less than 12 different motions authored by 14 different council members on reform. And it's through that large body of work and all of the reports that preceded it, and subsequent to those actions, that I think we've come to a place where there is a lot that we can do, it's in our capacity, and I absolutely thank you and your committee for endeavoring to take the show on the road and make the necessary changes to make sure that this utility is responsive. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, before I go, I'll look back, if I could get the CAO/CLA to come forward, Dr. Pickle. I'm going to start though with some general, or with some public comment where it relates to item one. We're going to loosely say a minute, but I'll give you more, but let's shoot for that at this point. So let me start off with Dr. Tom Williams and Linda Romney. Please come forward. Dr. Williams and Linda Romney, please come forward. Yes, sir. Again, if you have, you want to speak, fill out a card. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, North District Director. Where are we going with this? I would really like to see what the end goals are going to be. Is it to sell the DWP? Is it to make it become more of a department within the city structure, i.e. no more proprietary? An overall objective or goals should be assigned first. It took us five years to get an organization chart from DWP dated last year. However, no corporation that I'm familiar with would ever have such a structure. We don't know how many people are in it, what they do, and most importantly, how much do they cost in real time, plus all of the future unfunded mandates and liabilities that the city of Los Angeles may have. And oh, by the way, there's one person missing in this organization chart, and that's the mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Okay, Ms. Romney, you're next.
Good evening. What is most interesting is that I've had an additional problem with the Department of Water and Power as a ratepayer. I've written 42 letters to both the general manager and the head of customer service, and as of this date, I still have not received a response. The fact of the matter is, is that the billing is still not corrected, even though there was a class action lawsuit filed, and the water has been turned off for five months. And when you're a landlord/tenant, I'm being told that if there's an outstanding balance, that the landlord cannot have the utilities put back in their name without paying for the tenant's arrears and vice versa, and that the DWP has the right to give personal information out of the landlord to the tenant. This really needs to stop. We have nowhere to go.
Thank you. Okay, now, and I'm going to get back to the public comment, but why don't we begin the presentation, so if I could get Miguel and Mateus, come on up. And Dr. Pickle, you're on deck. You might want to come up here now and grab a seat. There are three microphones, I reserve one for you. Mr. Santana, do you want to start?
Certainly. Good evening, Miguel Santana, CAO. First, I want to thank Councilman Fuentes for the complimentary remarks about our report. Our staff worked very hard to put this together and to make it as comprehensive as possible. We structured this report by asking a series of questions, and throughout this presentation, we will raise those questions to really help inform which direction your council decides to proceed. This report was done after reviewing all the various studies that have been produced over the last few decades that talked about governance and some of the challenges faced by the department. We've met with the mayor's office, with several council members, the comptroller, the Department of Water and Power. We also had an opportunity to have conversations with a number of the labor unions to get their input as well. The goal here is to provide you a menu of options to consider as you look at what reforms to proceed with. We don't provide a specific recommendation, other than to say that at the end where you land, we recommend that you look at it holistically, that the way you decide to, on the issue of governance, has a direct relationship with the issue of hiring, has a direct relationship with ratepaying, who sets rates. All of that should be done comprehensively and look to make sure that those, the way the decisions are made are done holistically and not in conflict with one another. But ultimately, where your council decides to proceed and the voters of Los Angeles decide, that we left as an open question. So if we can move on to the first slide. In the first slide, we ask, ultimately, what level of oversight should the city council retain over DWP issues? And we summarize the ways in which the department is currently, is under the review of the city council, including rate-setting, debt issuance, long-term contracts, franchises, concessions, permit licenses and leases, power contracts, alternative contracting methods, transfer surplus property and power revenue funds, acquisition of real property and eminent domain, entry into other business enterprises, and the sale and exchange of surplus water. In addition to that, the mayor has provided oversight through Executive Director Ford, which directs the department to submit proposals to his office for review prior to submitting them to the board. And my office often gets asked to do reports based on the various asks made by the department. And oftentimes, those reports come to your council for final approval. A number of studies have determined that this level of oversight provides a number of challenges for the department, and many of those that you heard earlier in previous meetings. We lay out a number of possibilities for you to consider when it comes to the overall oversight of the council. The first is obviously to continue the status quo. The second is to remove the council's oversight altogether. The third is to limit the council's oversight to DWP matters with direct impacts to the city, such as rate-setting, debt issuance, salary setting, eminent domain, surplus water policy, and others. Or remove the council's oversight of the DWP operations and restrict the mayor and the council oversight to DWP policies and the budget as a whole. And what we mean by that is basically minimizing the role of the council on very macro matters such as the budget and overall policies, directions in which the commission wants to proceed. And that can be done in form of annual reports that are submitted that get endorsed by your council. And the final option we lay out is establish DWP as a council-controlled department, going to the other extreme where we answered the question, who's in charge? If you make it into a county, a city department, it essentially solves that question, but it brings it closer, not further away. Next slide. On the next slide, we ask, what type of city council jurisdiction should be provided in the Charter, Section 245 on DWP matters? And it really comes down to two different options. The first is maintaining the status quo, which gives your council the ability to take up a matter and vote up or down, but it does not allow you to amend it. It's simply, if your council votes it down, then it goes back to the department for consideration, and then back and forth. The next is to look at the 245E, which is specific around planning matters, that actually gives your council the ability to override decisions made by the department. And so not only would you be voting on the matter, but the final decision that your council makes is the one that ends up standing. The next slide speaks directly to rate-setting. And the question we ask here is, what level of oversight should the city council retain over the adoption of new water and power rates? As you know, currently, water and power rates are set by the board and ultimately approved by the council in accordance with the charter. The department has identified a number of challenges with the current rate-setting process, such as inconsistent rate reviews with unclear timing and other kinds of challenges. The current process is very lengthy and requires oftentimes several months of lead time before they make a decision. There is no set schedule in which the department submits various rates, and so one of the things that they've asked is that there be a process of regular review of the rate-setting structure. So in the context of the rate-setting, we've asked a couple of questions, or provide a couple of options, rather. The first is, as has been proposed, is to grant the department the sole authority to rate-setting. So whatever they ultimately decide is what stays. The second is to- The second is to eliminate the council's approval rates while retaining the 245 jurisdiction, either under the current status quo or under the Super 245, as it's called. And then the final option is to think about it more as a plan. Require the department to submit on a regular basis both an integrated resource plan and a water infrastructure plan. And through those plans, they provide their forecasting and their projections as to which direction they want to proceed as it relates to rates over a multiple-year period. If your council approves that plan, then the department can have the authority to move within that as long as it stays within the framework of the plan. And they could certainly provide annual reports to your council to ensure that they are within the framework that was presented. The next slide talks about the issue of hiring in civil service. There are a number of issues in this area. Some of them are strictly internal and frankly don't involve any charter change. Some do require charter changes. We'll try to distinguish those in the context of this presentation. On this slide, we ask, how should internal rules and practices regarding hiring be handled by the department? The department has specifically identified a number of challenges they have experienced as a result of their own internal rules and practices and certain charter sections, civil service rules, and other issues, particularly in the area of personnel. Regarding the internal rules and practices that could be considered for changes involves seniority-based bid plan, which is an MOU provision that requires vacant positions to be offered first to internal candidates and then filled based on seniority. This is not a charter requirement. This is something that was negotiated. The second would be, the effective rule of one applies to clerical bid plans and requires a manager to select the candidate when only one bids, or when there's only one bid, or otherwise, they must leave the position vacant. The third is the joint selection process, which requires a filling of a position that are special assignments that are identified in the MOU to be joint decisions made by management and labor. To make changes to any one of these practices, it does require a meeting confer. So the real options are to maintain them as the status quo or to work through the labor relations process to see changes to these particular practices. But again, no charter amendment is required for these changes to occur. The next slide speaks as it relates to civil service. Should the charter be amended to provide hiring flexibility to the department? There is a number of charter sections that the department has identified that if changed, would give them greater flexibility. A number of sections related to the number of exemptions that exist citywide. You know, as you well know, there's a cap of about one hundred and fifty exempt positions citywide, of which the department has to compete for with the rest of the city family. The department would like to see more exemptions granted to them and that there could be a charter change to allow for that or specific exemptions assigned to the department. Section 1009 requires vacancies, to the extent practicable, to be filled by promotion and based on seniority. That's another provision that the department would like to see changed. Another is Section 1010, which limits the filling of vacancies to the top three hold scorers or five candidates plus the number of vacancies. Section 1011 says probationary period for all entry-level classifications to not exceed twelve months for civilian positions. And then Section 1015 provides flexibility to define DWP as three or more separate departments for layoff purposes. So these are specific areas in which the department has asked for greater flexibility. And the options that you have in this context is to maintain in the charter or to seek a decision by the Angelenos to make an amendment in the charter. Now, it's important to point out, and certainly the city attorney could speak more to this issue. We've learned that state law requires that any changes to the charter as it relates to personnel-related matters must be presented to the voters on a general election. So that means that in order for you to consider this matter, it would need to be placed on the November ballot or at the next general election, which I believe would be in 2018. The next slide discusses, again, civil service rule and seniority related to civil service. And the question is, should the charter be amended to provide more hiring flexibility? Again, the department has identified a number of issues as it relates to seniority, as we've made a number of requests. Again, a charter amendment would be required in this case. The next slide is specific to the issue of hiring and the personnel functions. And the question here is, should the charter be amended to remove personnel department from the DWP classification and examination process and allow the department to have its own human resources function? The department has, believes that it has to compete citywide for resources as it relates to hiring, and because personnel handles all examination and classifications, they feel that it inhibits their ability to hire as quickly as they would like. So one of the areas that they would like to see is greater authority over hiring. The other area that has been raised is the issue of labor relations. As you know, my office manages labor relations. One of the questions to be considered, whether that function should be transferred to the department itself through its general manager or through its human resources function. The next slide, again, speaks to the larger question of whether or not there should be the elimination of civil service in the context of the DWP. And as was stated by Mr. Fuentes, one of the issues that we've looked at, both from a practical level and given the amount of time and effort it's gonna take to meet and confer on changes to the civil service system or even to the elimination of it. One thing your council could consider is simply placing, enabling amendments before the voters so that future changes to the charter could actually be made as it relates to civil service. And those would ultimately be negotiated and approved by both labor and by management. This gives greater flexibility in the future as the department's needs evolve. The next set of issues relates to contracts. This is an area that this department has identified as being a very high priority for them. They would like to have greater flexibility and greater authority over contracts. There's been a number of studies that have stated that the procurement process slows down their capital investments and infrastructure repairs. As part of our review, we requested the department to identify specific challenges and propose modifications. These proposed modifications to the procurement process may expedite contracting processes, which may ultimately result in operational and administrative efficiencies. They range from increasing the contract authority of the general manager from one hundred and fifty thousand to a maximum of five million in five years. This does not require a charter amendment. Modify and eliminate the Executive Directive IV, which requires for routine, ongoing operational contracts and software systems, a review from my office. Another is to adjust the RFP competitive negotiation requirements for the purchase of specialized equipment, eliminate the ordinance requirement for design-build, and eliminate the ordinance requirement for power contracts. Again, many of these changes could be done without a charter change. It's within the authority of your council to do through ordinance changes. With that, I'll turn it over to Matias, who will walk you through the items related to the board structure.
Yes. Good evening, committee members. Matias Farfana, Assistant Chief Legislative Analyst. And I'll be covering the next four policy areas that are covered in the CLACAO report. The first dealing with the current board structure and reform options available or mentioned in the report regarding that structure. The first one being, should the charter be amended to provide a full-time board for the DWP? And how many members should a modified DWP board include? The current DWP board structure consists of five part-time members, appointed by the mayor and confirmed by council. The first part of reform options are to remain with the part-time volunteer board or move towards a full-time board. The second reform options have to do with the number of commissioners. First option is to leave it at five members or potentially increase it to either seven or nine members. The next area is in regards to, in board structure, qualifications and should the city council modify qualifications to serve on the board? Currently, the charter provides that appointed commissioners be registered voters of the city, and that's the only qualification. Reform options include no change or make changes and add qualifications that would be required of board members. For example, the City Ethics Commissioner Board requires qualifications that aside from being a registered voter in the city of L.A. Or you could also require that the board members have utility-oriented expertise in water and power and/or that they have diversified utility expertise, which would mean that each board member would have to have a unique expertise in a specific area. For example, you know, one can have expertise in water, another in power, another in environmental issues, another in labor relations, et cetera. The next area is in regards to board member term limits, their current term and potential term limits. What terms shall the council pursue for the DWP board members? And shall the council pursue term limits for the DWP board members? Currently, DWP board members serve five-year staggered terms. One option is to change the term to four years. This would be more in line if we go with, for instance, an elected board. Then four-year term would seem more in line with, you know, council and mayor terms. Or they can change it to three-year terms, which would be a shorter term, which has its ups and downs, which are detailed in the report. And currently, the board is not subject to term limits. Reform for that is to no change or to implement term limits. Again, if we move towards an elected board, then term limits may be the way to go as far as going down that route. The next area is selection and removal of board members. How should the DWP board members be selected and removed? Currently, the board members are selected by the mayor, subject to council approval, and they're removed by the mayor, but council approval is not required for the removal of the board members. Reform options include, again, no change or to have the council appoint all of the members with no mayor approval or have a shared appointment authority by mayor and council in which the mayor appoints some of the board members and the council appoints others, or have it be elected by registered voters at large or regionally. Regarding the removal of board members, there can either be no change or allow removed member to appeal to the council, much like the way police commissioners work, or removal by the mayor with majority vote by the city council, or removal by two-thirds vote of city council for neglect of duties or gross misconduct or through a recall process if the board is elected. And that gets us to the board structure category. The next policy area is in regards to the general manager, the appointment and the removal. How should the DWP general manager be appointed and removed? Currently, the board appoints the general manager with confirmation by the mayor and council and may be removed with confirmation from the mayor. And the GM may appeal to the city council if that occurs. Reform options include, for the appointment, include no change or to vest the board with sole appointment authority or vest the board with appointment authority but have council retain Charter, Section 245, power to overturn that appointment or vest the board with appointment authority subject to the mayor's confirmation. Regarding options for the removal of the general manager, it would be to have no change or vest the board with sole removal authority or vest the board with removal authority and council retain Charter, Section 245, power to overturn that removal or vest the board with removal authority subject to the mayor's confirmation. Regarding the general manager's compensation, should the charter be amended to grant the DWP board sole authority to set the general manager's compensation? Currently pursuant to the charter, the board sets the general manager's compensation within guidelines established by the city council for the recommendations of the CAO. Reform options include no change or to vest the board with sole compensation-setting authority or vest the board with compensation-setting authority and the council retain the Charter, Section 245, power to overturn that or vest the board with compensation-setting authority subject to mayor's confirmation. The next policy area is in regards to board support. What type of analytical, administrative, and research support should be provided to the DWP Board of Commissioners? DWP Board receives clerical staff support for administrative task and analytical support from division managers currently. Reform options include to make no change or to provide the DWP board with authority to hire analytical staff similar to the CAO as described in the motion or provide the DWP board with authority to instruct the OPA. And finally, the last policy area I've been covering is the Office of Public Accountability, and that deals with should the CAO and CLA be instructed to report on viable options for strengthening the OPA, including its role in the rate-setting process? Currently, the OPA provides public independent analysis of department actions as they relate to water and power electricity rates. Various entities have identified challenges facing the OPA because of this limited role or it's not very defined. Reform options include no change and maintain the existing role of the OPA or instruct the CAO and CLA and OPA to report back on options for strengthening the OPA. That said, Miguel will cover the remainder of the presentation.
The last two sections of our report relate to the issue of the city attorney and the role of the city attorney in respect to all legal matters at the DWP. The options are to simply leave it alone, to keep the status quo so that the city attorney continues to be the attorney for the department. The second is to look at strengthening the role of the board in determining matters, legal matters. So one of the things that we could certainly look at that we need to conduct more research is, if the council was interested in providing more authority to the department as it relates to legal matters, how can they ensure that the department acts as the client when it relates to these issues? And we could certainly conduct more research to determine how that could be strengthened. And then the third option is, as being recommended, is to amend the charter and the administrative court altogether to empower the board to conduct procurement and retain legal counsel independent from the city attorney. And then finally, as it relates to the charter, as Mr. Fuentes indicated, the amount of the charter is set by ordinance. It's reflected in the mayor's proposed budget in terms of the amount that the charter, that the transfer would be as part of the overall general fund. And as other charter requirements establish, the department is required to inform the city of the amount of the transfer and then also sets a schedule as to when that transfer must occur. Now, of course, this matter is currently under litigation, and so we're limited as to what we could speak about in public. But if there were to be any discussion of the elimination of the transfer as a whole as a charter, then obviously that would require a charter amendment or a discussion, which I've heard, about converting the charter into a tax. That would, it would be recommended that that would ultimately go to the voters and that be placed on the March ballot because it would be essentially a general fund revenue source. And it'd be recommended that that be put on that particular ballot. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, now, before we get into questions and answers, I'd like to ask the councilman, put in a card to speak. So councilman, you wanted to say a few words. If you please come forward. So councilman, you wanted to say a few words, if you please come forward. Good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna compliment you. It's a job well done. This is a work, this proposal in progress. As it was originally introduced, I had a lot of concerns with it. It's not where it should be, but it's on its way. One of the decisions that still remain that concerns me is that uh the legal advice that's proposed for Department of Water and Power new board, should we be retained by the city attorney? To bring someone in from the outside and learn what the ropes are around here or hire someone is gonna be very costly and learning the process, which the city attorney already knows they have experienced lawyers there. They've always had their lawyer working in and for the Department of Water and Power and understand how it really works. Initially, I was concerned, and I tell you why. As it was proposed, we had blackouts and brownouts. We had deregulation in Sacramento. An attempt was made by the mayor and the board of commission from Department of Water and Power to incorporate the seat of L.A. into that legislation and deregulation. I was chairman of the intergovernmental intergovernmental relations committee and held firm, D run D and I, that it not be included in that proposal. Had it been, we would have blackouts and brownouts as well, but instead, we were able to sell energy to the state of California. Pasadena was able to do the same. My son was the mayor over there at the particular time and did not let that happen. So we eager to bring about some changes, changes in order always, but certainly could be under the control as you not uh proceeding to do that. And I just wanna say that it's nice that it can be a selected rather than elect them. Select them as you were proposing. To elect them would be a major problem for this city and for elected officials here. Once they're in office, they're powerful and they wanna look for another office to run for as, you know, think, so you gotta be careful about that. You got it under control, you're moving in the right direction, and I'm sure when it's finalized, it is something that I'll be able to support like others as well for the ballot as a proposition, but I wanna see it in the final state. Mr. President, thank you very much, very proud of you, doing a great job.
Thank you, sir. That means a lot to me coming from you. And the sound, where's Miguel? I don't wanna sound like the councilman and I had a conversation, but I share or I have questions myself where it relates to the city attorney's office. Have we received a lot of complaints about the way that the city attorney's office has dealt with DWP concerns?
My office has not.
Okay. I just wanted to know, that's something we'll probably talk about. I I do think that adjustments need to be made, but if they're, I'm not gonna go looking for a problem if it's not there. Now, if there's a way to, but we're gonna have that conversation as we move on. I don't wanna spend too much time on that, but councilman, I I that did cross my mind as well. And before I get to 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 you, Mr. Pickle, I do not wanna forget. Uh, I do have, I'd like to hear uh, first of all, Mr. Fuentes made at least two requests, and I'd like to ask that the um uh your office and the CLA's office respond to that and have that data prepared for this committee. I'd also like to add that where it relates to, one thing that I I I really think needs to happen is that there needs to be some kind of direct support staff to the commission, the panel, the directors, whatever the heck we call them, be they five members, be they seven, be they nine. And so I would like for you to come back with a a detailed report as to how many individuals that you uh have that 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 handle their concerns today, or if there's anyone there from the CLA's office. I'd like to get recommendations as to how it could be properly uh staffed. We want it, if if we're gonna do it, I wanna do it right. Another thing that I'd like to see is more detailed information where it relates to the uh compensation for a part-time board. I want the whoever we come up with who appoints, I want us to be in a position to attract the best of the best of the best without going, you know, crazy where it relates to compensation, but I also uh believe that that's important as well. And then I'd also like to see some real hard and fast recommendations where it relates to the contract situation. That's something that Mr. Fuentes has brought up, that's something that members of the neighborhood council has 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 brought up. And even though we here in the city of L.A. would like to, I'm sure, yea or nay on 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 everything, and 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 there's nothing wrong with us wanting to do that, but realistically, if that hampers the ability of the department to operate, then we need we need to look at other ways in which to do that. So I am open to a serious conversation where it relates relates to the general manager's ability to okay uh contracts at a higher level. Uh, you know, I'd like to really kinda see a range on that. I'd like to see how that would work. I'd also like to see if there, does it even make sense that the that that the council would have some kind of way to stop or start? I don't know, but that's something that we need to jump on, and I'd like to have this data ready when we um um when we meet again. And um, does anybody wanna ask a question before I go to Mr. Pickle? Mr. Harris Dawson?
Chair, and thank you all for the um very thorough report and and the logical way that you walk through it. I just had a question about the history of uh of some of the recommendations and sections that you uh arrived at specifically real as it relates to the city attorney's office. So it, I I'm just wondering, what is the genesis of looking at that, the issue of legal representation at all? Uh, it, does it come out of a particular set of concerns or, you know, and and if so, where do those concerns come from? Do they come from the city attorney, do they come from the department, so on and so forth?
So, w- we we try to research that question and really fundamentally, the question is really less about the 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 quality of work that the city attorney provides and more about who ultimately decides the outcome of litigation. So, you know, the frustration, if there is any, is really around um litigation ultimately being decided on some matters by the council and not by the commission. And so the questions that we raised here is in looking at fundamentally, e- even if you remove the city attorney and that's all you did and allow the commission to uh select their own outside counsel, under the way the structure is today or the practice in which the DWP commission operates as it relates to litigation, the client will still be in many matters the city council. And so you could change the attorneys, but ultimately, the decision-making is done on this side on 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 certain kinds of litigation. And so one of the things that we're recommending that we research further is if if ultimately your council moves in the direction of providing the department greater authority over contracting, over hiring, and over a number of areas, how does it also give it greater authority over managing litigation and ultimately playing the role of the client? And whether it requires a charter amendment or there the 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 in wage, the ways in which the department engages with litigation um could be researched so that it is consistent with all the other authority that is being granted to the department as a whole.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one one follow-up um question in this um you all may not have looked at. So in the areas where you, the proposal is, one of the proposals is to have DWP take responsibility for so for like hiring or um representing themselves. Does liability move? Uh, does that adjust liability in any way?
Well, the the department uh pays for its own liability, so if if it engages in litigation related to hiring, if it gets sued for um hiring or in hiring practices, then uh if it's generated from the department, then the department is responsible for covering those costs. So the general fund does not cover the cost of liability for the Department of Water and Power.
You saying that's the case now or that's
That's the case today.
So even though it's the city's personnel department, the city's personnel department makes an error while they're doing work on behalf of DWP, DWP has the liability at this moment?
Yes, that is correct.
And you know, another thing that that Marquis, I mean, Mr. Harris Dawson makes me think about when you talk about uh the challenges uh where it relates to the personnel department, and if you wanted to eliminate civil service or whatever it is you wanna do, uh, that's gonna take a long time. So I think we do need to spend a little more time on, I don't wanna call it short-term fix fixes, but interim fixes, ways that you can bolster uh their personnel capability now and and still keep a relationship possibly with uh uh the personnel department here. What would we have to do charter-wise? What can we do administratively? See, if you can answer those questions, it just makes it easier for us going forward. So I wanna go to Dr. Pickle, if everybody's good with that. Doctor, I wanna go to you, and then I'm gonna take another couple public comment cards. Floor is yours.
Thank you, good evening. Uh, I'm Fred Pickle, Executive Director of the Office of Public Accountability Ratepayer Advocate. Uh, first, I think it's useful to step back and uh ask, what are we trying to fix? And we've talked about some of the components of what we're trying to fix, but I thought I'd go through what we perceive as the highlights. Uh, in the short term, illustrated by our report on things that needed to be addressed in the billing system challenges is the agility to fix problems quickly. Uh, and to make, to improve that agility, the department needed to be able to contract faster, hire fa- faster, and under dire and urgent circumstances like in the billing system crisis, uh have expedited contracting and hiring authority. Longer term, uh, the uh utility industry is going through a lot of changes, not just DWP over the next ten years. Uh, and DWP is also gonna have some challenges of its own, not just with the cost of solar, uh making rooftop solar a lot cheaper, but also their costs relative to adjacent communities are becoming much closer. So the department will need to build agility long-term to adapt to changes in DWP's business environment. So we we have short-term problems, and like you said, we need some interim uh things to fix hiring and contracting, but longer term, there are other components. Our comments on the report, we'll be very short on this, it was a very good report. It's a very comprehensive report, uh, and we've heard from a number of others with the same assessment. However, uh, the proposed alternatives shouldn't be limited, and this group certainly hasn't uh limited its discussion in terms of the alternatives presented in the report. In looking at the board structure and selecting a board, I think it's important that we not place typical city limits on geographic uh the ability to select potential members from just the city. Now, if we look at even the city's appointees to MWD, more than one of those appointees lives outside the city. So uh to get an appropriate qualified pool, you need to be able to look beyond the city. Second, another example, uh contracting authority. Five million is the new limit was proposed based on that being Sacramento Municipal Utility District's limit. Well, DWP is several times larger than uh Sacramento. We should have a probably a higher limit, ten, maybe even fifteen million. Finally, in my comments, what should be changed at the OPA? Uh, first, changes at the OPA should be driven by what changes we select for DWP reform rather than the OPA driving uh or uh being decided independently. It should be, as Mr. Santana said, everything should be decided as a package. In um in some of the criticism of the structure of the OPA, um, the Navigant IEA report did not discuss, well, it discussed the charter and problems it saw with the charter, it didn't discuss the implementing ordinance for the OPA that this council passed uh now two and a half years ago. Uh, and that specifically provided how we provide advice and how we report uh in greater detail. And um in uh our experience, we've had complete independence to make our recommendations, so I can't say that our independence has been compromised in any way. Uh, so in summary on that, um, I think changes to the OPA should reflect what changes are made overall. In any case, however, there are a few small things. Uh, one, uh, to give flexibility in hiring for the appointed OPA, I think it's important for all the employees in the OPA to have exempt status, similar to the attorney's office uh and the ethics commission. Given the greater number of the greater work being performed by the OPA, I think a higher floor on the minimum budget uh is appropriate and uh more formal specificity on access for information. Uh, we shouldn't be limited on the process, but the general description of the type of access needs to be more specific. And finally, uh, people occasionally mention uh perhaps an IG or inspector general role for the OPA rather than solely a ratepayer advocate. We think there's an advantage to having a ratepayer advocate because in an inspector general role, uh, the group has to cha- chase every um complaint revolve involving waste, fraud, or abuse, or any malfeasance, uh, often at quite small levels. As a ratepayer advocate, we get to uh address things that we believe are material uh and have material impact on the rates.
Okay, well, I thank you, Dr. Pickle, and what I if 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 I could make a request of you, if your shop would put together uh recommendations, I mean, exact recommendations as to what you think uh makes a more efficient OPA, you know, uh, give us some some some, put some meat on that bone and let us, you know, chew on it for a while and figure out. So recommendations from you, we would uh objectively review, and I'd like to see that.
Some of that would involve putting uh restrictions on DWP in terms of notice for something.
I I don't know what, I'm gonna, you know, it's it's your report, and we would be excited to review it. Uh, Mr. Fuentes uh talked earlier about he thought maybe we should do this and his, he talked to the community and, you know, he's altered positions on something. Well, you know, Mr. Fuentes, where it relates to me and the number of the board, see, I thought a full-time board, I really, really thought. And then I talked to people and kind of evolved a little bit, so I thought maybe a part-time board, and I thought maybe five, but when you're talking about getting diverse views from throughout the city of Los Angeles, you know, it does make some some sense. I'd like to uh, you know, get get your thoughts on that specific request where it relates to seven. Another thing, uh, we we talked about the possibility of some criteria, some requirements of commissioners. What are your thoughts on that? You know, what what do you actually think? And and Doc, you could you can weigh in on this as to as well. The statement that Dr. Pickle made where it relates to uh not limiting possible selections to the city of Los Angeles, maybe we should talk about that. Why, why do we do that now? Is there a reason that we do that now, or is it just for optics? Uh, if we did it where related to this board, does that mean we'd have to do it for every other commissioner, what have you? Would we have to change the rules there as as well? And uh, I just think all that makes for a good conversation, and if we're gonna make recommendations, we should, everything should be on the table. So the sooner that you can respond to us, we will meet as many times as necessary so that our goal is, again, to try to have a recommendation that we present to the council. Uh, and I'd like for us, the council, to be able to have a couple of conversations on it, and we still have enough time to put something on the ballot if we choose to go there. Okay, I'm gonna, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Uh, thank
I'm looking at uh, I'm looking at you, Byron, I'm looking at Terry. Just throw s- don't throw something at Marquis, and when you hit him, I'll call on you. Don't throw it at me. Don't throw it at me.
I'll duck. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Just a question with regard to this, to the board, some more questions about the board. I'm wondering if someone, perhaps his personnel, can help come up with a profile for workers that are available, that both have the kinds of expertise that you, that's been described, and can afford to work part-time? So, I, I mean, I just worry that, on the one hand, there is the perspective that you bring because you have expertise, because you're an attorney, or because you know about utilities, or whatever. There's also the personal perspective that you bring, right? Because you've operated a small business, you're a parent in a single-family home in the city, which I, I think is a big deal, or you operate a business inside the city, and you use, you, you relate to DWP both as an expert, but also as a customer of one kind or another. So I, I'm just, I, I'll tell you why I raised the question. I just worry that you really limit the pool of people you can get once you say it's a part-time job. Much more so than you do, by the way, limiting it to people who live in Los Angeles, as an example. You know, I had submitted to you there far more candidates who live in Los Angeles who would be available for a full-time job than there are candidates who live anywhere that have any diversity in age, life experience, and probably, and probably ethnic background that could, that would be available for a part-time job as, as we've laid out here.
Okay, now, da-da-da-da, let me do some public comment, and then I'll get to you guys. Let me get Commissioner Schaefer, or Leonard Schaefer, is it Aura Vasquez? Please come forward. I cannot make out this, is it Liz Amston?
Amston.
Okay, so, come on, sir, you, you had a floor. And thanks, guys, and just hang around. Yes.
Good evening, and once again, thank you for holding this type of hearing. Really appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
Um, I could speak to you for about a couple of hours, but I'm not going to. I'll just throw out a few ideas of my own, other than perhaps based on things that I've heard that maybe this should move to the next election sometime in 2017, just to give more time for people to look at it. I'd hate to see this buried at the very end in, in November, and it's really kind of obscure right now. I know I've talked to people, general public, and they have no idea what we're talking about here. But on recommendations, yes, I'd like to see a board appointed for five years, I'd like there to be seven. I'd like them removed for good cause only, as opposed to anything else. Yes, I'd like the appointing authority to remain as it is. I think the board should appoint a GM, subject to some authority, be it the City Council or the mayor. There should be a 245 process, but it should be up-
Take your time, go.
Okay. There should be some type of supermajority on an up or down vote with regards to, say, rates. As far as city attorney, I think a city attorney should be around where there is an issue that could bring about city liability, but otherwise, there should be some independent council, and perhaps it should be the OPA that has that independent council and be the independent source of information.
Okay.
So those are just some of my thoughts.
Thank you. Yes, please come up and identify yourself, please.
Liz Amston, I'm from Highland Park, and I speak mostly for myself, but also for other people in my area who have concerns.
Yes.
I didn't have the chance to read the report, but would like to address less the specifics and more the policies that would drive these decisions. We the People need to see the DWP held accountable for timeliness and costs of real upgrades of infrastructure, long-term, not just patching year-to-year. We need to move away from centralized power and water distribution systems and infrastructure towards independent linked systems, so in the event of a major disaster, lesser damaged neighborhoods can thrive and provide help to those in need. We need to accelerate the move towards a sustainable and resilient future with solar power and locally harvested water. As a city and through the DWP, we need to cut emissions, address global warming, and take the lead in shifting to green energy, attracting businesses and creating jobs. Be in the front, not playing catch-up to San Francisco, San Diego, and others. We need to expand the power of the OPA as well as having a strong governance board, part-time as discussed here tonight, which should include representatives from the neighborhood council system with the necessary expertise to speak on behalf of and protect the interests of our stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. So is Ms. Vasquez, are you here? Please come forward. She left? Okay, if I could get Joanne, please come forward, followed by Dean Anderson.
Joanne Yvanna Guard, West Hills Neighborhood Council.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to be here. First of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Fuentes for being open enough to hear comments about his original proposal and to start making changes and to be flexible with it. One of the reasons why it takes so long to get anything done is that there, it is necessary, time necessary, by our MOU, to allow the people, the neighborhood councils, to be able to weigh in on the matter. Also, how long will it take to find commissioners with the necessary experience and to identify the qualifications and who are willing to work part-time? I can, I think that perhaps somebody who is retired and who has the necessary experience would be willing to work on a part-time basis. I remember what was going on with the OPA and get, just getting the qualifications, it took almost two years before we hired an actual OPA. So, that, that timeframe has to be limited. I have more, but I'll reserve my comments for later.
Thank, well, trust me, we'll, we'll be meeting again, that's for sure. So if I could get-
Next month.
Yes, ma'am. If I could get Mr. Anderson, followed by Joseph Soria, followed by Sarah Rascón. Yes, sir.
Hello, Dean Anderson. I'd like to see the DWP held accountable. It does seem too much that there's so many layers, and anybody trying to communicate to DWP has to go through so many layers, never really gets an answer. And especially like the ratepayer, the voters, have some kind of input on this. You know, for example, you can get a meter installed in your house, you can't, they don't install it, but they won't put an analog back. You know, we also have an issue with the coyma spreading grounds, we just found out about. Supposedly 200 trucks a day for two years, digging up all this dirt. Think of what it'll do to the infrastructure, the roads, the neighborhoods, you know, we just found out about that. Seems like it's been shoved down our throats. So, appreciate the board, maybe, what do you say, keep the fox from guarding the chicken house, so, thank you.
Okay. Please come forward and identify yourself. And Joseph, you better come on now. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Sarah Rascón with the LA Area Chamber of Commerce.
Yes.
On behalf of over 1,600 organizations representing over 35 industry sectors, the LA Area Chamber of Commerce strongly supports governance reform to the DWP. DWP is a large, multi-billion-dollar public utility, which actually has some of the lowest and most competitive rates in the state. As an acting business and utility, DWP is bound to city rules and practices that prevent it from operating at its entire efficient capacity, we believe. DWP's operations require updates to improve its effectiveness. We therefore support the following concepts. As for a board, we support a more independent, less politicized board, reform to the civil service program, allowing DWP independence to hire for jobs and positions requiring expertise, creating a competitive, skilled workforce. Contracting and procurement policies would be improved, allowing the department more flexibility and independence, creating a nimble and efficient procurement process. And lastly, the power revenue transfer to the city's general fund be reformed, meaning the transfer amount be decoupled from revenue and establish an amount that does not fluctuate with revenue. Thank you.
Okay, don't, 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 because I'm going to make a, a request of the clerk that will affect you. What, not just you, but what I'd like for us to do is to send a formal invitation to the chamber, to VICA, to the CCA, to the LA Business Council, to send a rep at our next hearing, and just give us a more detailed business view. Okay? And I also want to send a request to the committee that Mr. Wilkinson is on, the DWP Oversight Committee, and to the one that Mr. Humpherville is on, the Advocacy, DWP Advocacy Committee. And what I, what I would like, Tony, and what I want the invitation, is an invitation to a conversation. It does not have to be Mr. Wilkinson, recommendations from the committee or the board, but I think that would be a very spirited conversation where we could get a different perspective. You guys have been in the trenches with them for a while, so we're, we want to have you here at the, the next hearing, and you'll be receiving invitations as well. It is my thought that we're going to have a presentation coupled with community input, and I think that that's how we will, I think, send, let individuals know what it is we are attempting to do here from the various organizations, plus we hear from the most important organizations, which is the residents of the city of Los Angeles. So let's bring Joseph up.
Thank you.
Thank you again, okay? So, Mr. Clerk, I'm counting on you to, you can work with my office, and we'll come up with the wording. Welcome, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me here. I work for the Department of Water and Power, and I would tell you that there are a lot of us on the labor force, we don't wear suits and ties and carry briefcases, but we are hard workers, and we do the labor work. There are many that work above the ground and below the ground, so we hours in the morning to work hard to provide power and the water side and electrical side for the city of Los Angeles. We're very hard workers, and to take away our civil service status is not a plus for us, it's more of a slap in the face.
Okay.
I say it respectfully.
Oh, you, you're a very respectful gentleman, and I appreciate you saying that. We want to hear from you as well. And I think that you can tell by the conversation that took place today that we're really trying to, to take whatever the, the problem is at DWP where it relates to staffing and hiring and address the problem. So we, that's why we, we're requesting so many different ways to handle it. So I appreciate, and I'm sure the rest of the committee does, you taking the time to be here with us tonight. Thank you so very much for coming, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I want to look to members, are there any other questions?
Excuse me?
Yes. Oh, you have what?
We have one more card.
All right. We have a late card. Let's take them out back and do them up right. Okay, let's see who this is. Oh, we can't do that. Lorraine Lindquist, come forward. Please come forward. And welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lorraine Lindquist, and I am here to urge you to change the city charter in order to allow purchase, power purchase agreements outside of DWP. We need policies like community choice aggregation models that the county is currently pursuing. While we really appreciate DWP's planned increases in renewable power generation, the truth is, these changes are simply not fast enough and not big enough. The whole world looks to Los Angeles as an environmental and cultural world leader, and it's time to step up and claim the mantle of climate leadership. Let's show the world what it looks like when we generate clean local energy procured and chosen by the community directly. It's time for the old dirty fuels and outdated power generation models to make way for the 21st century of clean community energy.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Okay, so Deputy Mayor Romero or Mr. Chair, go, Mr. Wilkinson, you guys want to say, have a question or, or make a statement before I adjourn?
Well, I'd like to make a-
The floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, because, because I, just as Councilmember Fuentes is obviously digesting community input, so I think that people in neighborhood councils, myself personally, we're all saying, oh, well, maybe if you turn these dials here, you could get a better result. I'm really excited that this is already, at this point, a real dialogue, that community input is being heard, and we've only just begun this process. So I think, thank you very much, Council President Weston, for providing this, this dialogue that we are having today.
Well, I think it's important that, that we move in this direction, and, and for those of you that, that care, we did vote to extend the ability for the councils to speak before the council today, and we did do that, and that will be up to five minutes, depending on the presiding officer has the, the authority to do that. So, if there are, yes, go right ahead.
I just want to say, thank you to the CAO and CLAs for your report in simplifying some options for these complicated, complex issues that we're facing at DWP. I also want to say thank you to Council President for your commitment to continuing this very authentic dialogue on these important issues. The mayor is committed to exploring all the different avenues to ensure that we get this public input in this process. But at the same time, we need to capitalize on this opportunity, and over the next few months, work together to make sure that what goes before the voters are smart and sound changes to our utility, that we can all get behind it. Behind, and more importantly, is that we need to make every effort to put something on the ballot before the voters try to make something in this, this November election. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, and we, we thank, again, I want to reiterate that the mayor has been very, very helpful and engaged in this process, and I, I thank him for that. And Tony, I can guarantee you that we're going to have a, a, we are going to really have a true partnership where it relates to our council and the neighborhood councils. Mr. Chairman, go.
Thank you very much. First, I thought I had accidentally emailed my notes to Councilmember Fuentes, because when he was reading what he had, I was looking at my notes going, we've talked to the same stakeholders, and I think we're going to be really moving forward on this very quickly.
Hey, maybe you did email yourself.
Oh, did I? Oh, okay. And then the other thing is, is I would request so that when the report comes back, is that maybe there be incorporated a timeframe as to how long it would take to implement? Because when I talk to stakeholders, a lot of times they go, well, how long is this going to take? And having that transparency of, well, if we do this, and this, and this, it'll take six months, a year, and we have milestones for that, and I think it would be very beneficial, not only the ratepayers, stakeholders, neighborhood council, and the council itself, though, to understand how long it would actually take, so that they could prioritize it, so that it can be moved forward once the voters approve it. And then last, though, the board itself, I've heard a lot of difference where maybe we should look outside, maybe we should look inside. I believe a lot of we the people for the people, and if this is a municipality-owned utility, it should be by the people who are in the city of Los Angeles. And when it comes to what kind of skills should they have, I would think they should be smart and prudent, because they should be able to rely upon the general manager and the people that work for the department to tell them what they need to know. I mean, Council President Weston, you, you don't know the size of the pipes outside, do you?
Yes, I do. No, I don't.
Oh, you do? Oh, thank you. But seriously, we, we would be asking the experts in the department, or about street, how we do the asphalt service, we would be asking them. And to have that, to say, well, the board should just be prudent and smart, and to be able to ask those questions of the people that actually work for the department, and I really think that's where we should be looking at. And we'll have some other things next time, next meeting. I think this is great.
And, and I think the next, I don't know who's next, I know Bank's going to help us with the neighborhood councils from the valley, and I know we're going to slank in the neighborhood councils from that area. Again, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming, but I also want to take a moment, these, like I said, this is an official committee hearing that usually happens during business hours. So what I have asked is this staff to work late, which they have done, and I want you, all the staff, and the, the clerk, the city attorney, everybody, CAA, CAO, CLA, thank you. Okay? This is important. Okay, this is important, and in order to do this, and if we want the people to be engaged, we're going to have to do it at unique or different hours. So, I want you to know that the committee really appreciates you spending quality time with the people that we all work for. So, thank you all. This committee is adjourned.